The area of school psychologists, and an intense special needs teacher at the elementary level is absolutely, it will be unavoidable, it's a must. And these folks, as we have talked about before, would work with some of our media students, and obviously help foster a positive classroom environment. And where we would strategically put some of these positions, when we get to them, are the earliest grades, pre-K, K-1. That is where we know, through research and just in terms of practice, that any and all services there make a world of difference as you move forward. So, again, when looking at our initial configuration, we first talked about reassigning, and we have talked about reassigning all grade K-4 students at PMS to Templeton Elementary School. Then, looking at that, those numbers were just so large that they would not be able to be sustained within Templeton Elementary School. And so, that prompted the need to look at reassigning 5th grade back to the middle school, which, in this district, is obviously a very common configuration for the last 20 or some hundred years. The 5th grade has been part of the middle school, and I think that that certainly worked to our benefit when we were thinking about it. But, there were issues identified right off the bat. It required the district to hire three more additional, or three additional Unified Arts folks to make the middle school schedule work. Four grades, generally speaking, two grades would be off at the same time, whether it be prep, plan, lunch, etc. When you start looking at the numbers, you're talking anywhere between 100, 125 per class, and those students have to go someplace. For lack of a better way of putting it, they can't be with their classroom teachers, so they must be somewhere else. So, that, obviously, when we started looking at the entire schedule, and by the way, we would still need to utilize between anywhere between 10 and 25 sections or blocks of time from the folks at the high school. And as you see in the second bullet, again, high school would have to increase the number of blocks, which then reduces the number of class offerings at the high school. So, it became almost deja vu all over again, because we were going through this last year, but the numbers were lower the last few years. But the numbers are starting to increase, which means that we need more room, right? We need more people in order to facilitate the schedule. So, the plan, we would reassign all grade K-4 students to Templeton Elementary School. We would reassign all 5th grade students to the middle school. But then, we came up with reassigning the 8th grade to the high school, and I'm gonna stop here, not stop here, but I'm gonna pause here a bit, because what this allowed us to do, and what we figured out quickly, is that by putting the 8th grade under the high school umbrella, it then created more opportunities for, well, first off, it did not require as many Unified Arts folks in order to make the schedule work. That was the most important piece. The other part of it was that by moving the 8th grade to the high school, we'd be able to utilize the high school teachers more efficiently and effectively, because they would not need to have so many blocks, or scheduled blocks, dedicated to the middle school. So, once we did this, once we started to kind of rough this out, we started to realize that by moving the 8th grade to the high school, we started to see a lot more benefits in terms of staffing, and of course, reducing costs. So, therein lie, at first, just the initial plan, but that didn't solve all our problems, obviously, because in terms of where we needed to go, we needed to reduce, we had to cut funds, we had to cut money, cut overhead. And when you're in education, folks, as I've said many times before, education is staff-intensive. We are people-driven. Generally speaking, supplies and others do not make the grade, and will not make a substantial dent to almost any budget when you need to cut potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, in looking at the entire configuration of what we had after the plan was roughed out, we found that we could cut one administrator, six teaching positions, a secretary position, and a part-time custodian across the district. That lowered, of course, the need or our requirement, but it also, what it also represented was the ability to hire the staff members that I had mentioned in the beginning. So, I'm talking about some of the social-emotional staff, school psychologist, intense special needs teacher. We would still need to add a Unified Arts teacher to the middle school, because the numbers are much larger now that are actually in the elementary grades, and we would still need to, again, hire a Unified Arts teacher, but that's, one was better than potentially three. So, what does the 8th grade do? What will happen is that the 8th grade will physically be located at the middle school for next year. They are currently in their classrooms right now, they are, for all intents purposes, they'll stay right where they are unless we move them down the other hallway that happens to be in the middle school, but there's just no room on the high school side to move them, even if we were to do that. So, they will be physically located at the middle school. The 8th grade students will still receive instruction from the 8th grade team. I think that was a big concern, like where would my 8th grader receive math instruction? They'll still receive, the 8th graders will still receive their instruction from 8th grade teachers, with the exception of students who are in the eighth program, who are taking advanced courses in ELA in math, and actually, and have for the past five or six years received instruction through some of the high school folks. This will more effectively utilize the middle school and high school workforce, as I've discussed. I think that, over time, the way we were configured, and the only way that we could really solve a problem, whether it be instructional or otherwise at times, was by adding people, because everyone was so locked into either a middle or high school schedule that it didn't allow for a lot of flexible either groupings or programming. By moving the 8th grade to the high school, and having them literally have their common planning and prep time, because in the middle school, the grades go on prep or lunch, etc., as a grade. So, if there are five kids, five teachers, pardon me, in the 8th grade, they break all at the same time. At the high school, they prep or plan or break by content area. So, if you're an English teacher in the 8th grade next year, you will have your common planning, but you'll have it with your, with your, the other ELA teachers from the high school, for example, whereas the 8th grade math, social studies, and science teachers will still be teaching, because they will break on those schedules. Well, that's a big deal, because then you're not trying to find a place for, I think, in next year's situation, 120-some-odd kids to go. You're only looking for a class size, a class level to go someplace in terms of Unified Arts, along with the other high school kids. So, that makes a big difference. And, again, we'll be able to utilize our middle school and high school teachers more efficiently, as I've said, and offer more classes, or more types of classes. It only requires hiring additionally Unified Arts, which we talked about. It also prevents the middle school from having to administer four MCAS tests. I think that that also falls kind of below the radar when we start talking about these type of things, but to administer four MCAS tests is, well, to four grades, mind you. We do this all online now. There are no more written tests. So, you have to have the infrastructure, you have to have the computers, you have to have all of those things for folks to be, and potentially, two grades at a time taking the test, although we've got some flexibility, far more flexibility now, it's still gonna take a lot of resources, and that came into play, we had to factor that in as well. All right. So, for scheduling, folks who are, you know, who understand or like to understand the scheduling, you see here that the blocks that would be needed are in gray. And so, when you start seeing, so in this typical schedule, we just, again, it was just a snippet, you're talking that, one, two, three, four, five, there'd only be six blocks needed in order to accommodate the Unified Arts schedule of, in this case, it 's the, it's the 5th grade, or actually, it's for the, it's five, six, and seven for the middle school, whereas before, it was closer to 10, or even more. Benefits of the district, we've talked about this quite a bit, but moves three positions to the general fund from school choice. We're trying to wean ourselves off, or not be so dependent on school choice. We are very school choice-driven in terms of how we fund our district. We'll get to a slide in a little bit, I'm gonna show you that we're somewhere in the area of netting for, you know, potentially netting $700-some-odd thousand, you know, for a grand total of 1.4. We spend 1.4 in a combination of staff salaries and insurance. That's a problem, because many districts, or a lot of districts, would like to utilize those funds to, for one-time projects, fixing the track, fixing a roof, fixing a room, I don't know, you could go on and on. We actually have had to utilize school choice funds to help carry some of our operating costs, in terms like staff, and that is not where you want to be. It adds a second nurse to Templeton Elementary School, which we absolutely need to do. 500 pre-K through currently 5, but it'll be the same numbers, roughly 500 kids, pre-K through 4. One nurse is just not, it's just not, it can't be done. It's just very, very hard, and it's almost like Grand Central Station on a daily basis. Adds an additional custodian to TES. It's a big building, it's a large building, and we knew last year that we probably didn't have the manpower to adequately clean, maintain, which is, of course, very important. It adds a middle school Unified Arts teacher, which we've talked about. Middle school will be less dependent on the high school, which is very important. More course offerings available for the high school, we talked about why, because they will not be needed to support the middle school so much, so we can actually offer more course levels, more courses. Lessons that depend on school choice, which I've just talked about. It adds equitable service to all elementary students. This should be on the top of the list, from my perspective. We are not equitable in the services that we give our elementary students at both schools. We're not. We do not have the staffing that we need in order to do that. I use guidance a lot, because it's simple, it's just a simple and understandable topic, but we do not have a dedicated guidance counselor at Phillipsden-Morton. Those are the why not, because we don't have the money to do that. We have to share staff, we have to share Unified Arts folks, we have to share art, PE, music, they go back and forth. Well, if it's money that folks are concerned about, and services, we will never make up travel time, not in a six-and-a-quarter-hour day. So, no matter what, someone is going to be shorted at some point. It's not equitable, okay? So, that is, again, you should have put that on top, because that is the focus of what we try to do here in school. And, of course, it still supports continued academic growth. We have to keep the programs and projects that we have established, and we have nurtured, and we have actually met success with, and we've talked a lot about that on our typical school committee meetings, you know, just our regularly scheduled meetings, about the improvements that we are making academically. Again, making sure that we're equitable in doing so. I lost my picture. Okay, it's gone. I don't have my, it's not here, though, look at, okay. I don't know what I just did, I cannot see. Hold on, okay. Let's see how this works. Okay. So, before you, you have a budget that, given everything that I've just explained, would increase 2.5% compared to last year. I know that those are, that is definitely a handout that's been, that folks have. What this means in terms of the contributions, as you can see here, it represents, and I have another slide, we'll literally say the same thing, but the Phillipsden total will increase by 5.27%, which is $84,000, I'm rounding, and Templeton, 6.8%, which would increase by $454,000, and I'm rounding, which this slide right here notes specifically. So, one of the larger questions, and most, one of the more consistent questions that I've received, in terms of this reconfiguration, is that won't there be too many students wherever you're going to put them, because Templeton Elementary cannot handle, whether it be the parking, the location, the footprint, etc. And so, what we did, and I know that we've presented this a few times, is that what I did is I graduated everybody to a grade. I had to utilize this year's pre-K and K numbers, because we never know what actual pre-K and K numbers are going to be, so I just utilized the same number that we had this year, and that's why their highlight will be turquoise, or whatever color that is, but, and then I simply graduated them. So, K became first, first became second, etc. And when you do that, and you do graduate the grades in that manner, you see that our current student total as of December, when we first created these slides, was 654 kids. By graduating everyone, and I'll be very clear, and I'll be very open about this, this is if not one single child moves into the district, and not one single child leaves the district. Very clear about that. How do I know how many are gonna come in, and how many are gonna come out? I don't know that. So, these are projections, but you are looking at, because, again, what this, what we've talked about the last couple of years at least, but what this reconfiguration does is that it takes, there are five teachers at the K through 5 level, okay? Well, we would be subtracting one teacher from that, taking those kids and pushing them into the remaining four. So, you go from anywhere between a class size of wherever it is now, 22, 23, 24, to what you have here, 29, 29, 28, 28, 29, K through 4, okay? Now, I pause here, because I want to make sure I say this again. This alarmed people at first, those are too hot. I'm going to say it again. The three district meetings that we had last November, at least from my perspective, told me that this is not an issue, because the money that we needed kept all teachers, kept the elementary teachers, not all teachers, kept the elementary teachers. That's what it did. Three times, it was voted down. This is the result of that. And I'm pausing on purpose, because it's important, because this decision was made in November, not necessarily in March, when we started creating this budget. The other part is the middle school. 5th, again, I graduated everybody, right? So, what you look at is that this is where some of our highest numbers are, and this is a good thing. This is, there's some positive in these numbers, by the way, because we do have more residents in this district than we've had over the last couple of years. No, it's not gigantic, but they are increasing. And what you're seeing here is that the 5th grade will be 109 kids, the 6th grade will be 121, and the 7th grade will be 135, you know, giving us a class average of 22, 24, and 27, that's if nobody moves in, and nobody moves out. And the middle school is currently at 373, and as you probably would expect, well, I didn't expect it at first, but the 7th grade is, the 6th and 7th grade are some of the largest groups that we have here, and you'll see that it's rough, it's about even, we project 365 if no student moves in around. And you see the number breakdown there. The high school, well, of course, increases, all right? Our 8th grade is at 121 kids, again, graduated. Yes, the 9th grade, I factored in Monty Tech, because what we know is we lose students to Monty Tech, so I didn't want to inflate any numbers, so I took basically the average, you know, student, the number of students that we lose, and then just graduated everyone else. The current middle school, high school total is 698 students as of December, and what it'll be, you know, projected with this configuration would be 850, 850, pardon, okay? So, there in terms, if you're looking, the concern was, well, jeez, you're putting too many kids into buildings that can't support that. That is not the case in any of the situations. We can never factor for, you know, if we have a gigantic population growth, and we gained 40 elementary students, if that should happen, that's a whole other, again, that's a whole other conversation, but as we've trended, this is what we have currently. School choice, talked a lot about school choice. As we thought, because we did not take a lot of school choice students in last year, because we didn't have any room, quite frankly, our numbers stayed relatively flat. We get a preliminary report in December, it never usually ends up being the exact same number all the time, when you finally get to final in June, but we had 242 students school choicing in the district. What was surprising, and I have to tell you, I am very happy to see and to say, that the number of kids school choicing out of the district dropped quite a bit. And, again, I know it's preliminary, I get it, but if, you know, might as well be happy winged him. And so, when we start looking at what this differential is in terms of money, I'm sure you're going to see an increase, but it isn't because of more school choice being added, it's less that are leaving. As I've said in the past, I would love to take credit for this, because I would say that it's because of me. It's not, clearly. It's honestly a direct reflection of the teachers that we have in this district. Parents do not, school choice, their students, or their children, pardon me, into places, do not educate their children well, it's not either emotionally or physically safe, period. No one's gonna drive all the way out here to do that, and that is a direct reflection of the teachers, period. And I'm very happy and proud to have said that. School choice receding, you know, again, this, it's kind of an odd number, when you start talking about school choice, you know, just receiving and sending. We, you know, last year, FY19, a grand total of, we netted after in and out, you know, We project, remember, these numbers are not official till June, we project 730. Well, when you add that to the other $700,000, we already know that we've spent that money next year on salaries and insurance. So, when someone says, well, you're sitting on 1.4 million dollars, no, I already have 1.4 million dollars in bills that I have to pay, which I'd rather not do, obviously, but that's how we're gonna have to operate until we become less dependent on it. School choice revolving, yep, eight teachers, there they are. Eight teaching positions in school choice, that is not a good thing. It's not, because if it goes upside down someday, very quick, this number will, that money, we need all those teachers, so then I have to bring it to the local side, and that's to bring $493,000 over to the general side, right, to the good folks of Templeton and Phillipsden, that is going to be a hard burden to bear all at once. So, that's why you don't like to put salaries in there. Professional development is mandatory. We have to professionally develop our teachers, it's best to come out of here, because why? Well, if the monies went away in school choice, well, we could do without professional development, although it's mandated by the state, what's the state, you know, you'd say the state will give us more money, but you're not gonna, certainly, you still be able to serve its Health insurance, you see $789,000 in health insurance. We all know what health insurance is, we know how important that is, that's not a good place to keep it, okay? Yesterday, I received a letter from the Phillipsden Select Board asking, and I don't have the, I left it on my desk, but in general, what would be the monetary amount needed to run a school, and forego everything I basically just, I just explained. In order to talk about this, it isn't so much, we need to make sure that we frame this question appropriately. This isn't so much about what Phillipsden needs in order to keep its building open, or to do that, of course, right? It's about what the district needs in total, because we go back to one of my first slides, and without the cursor, I don't dare go all the way back, but if you remember, there was a slide that said, level service and all the things that we need was $20,720,000. This was my first budget presentation, and I simply said, that is never gonna work, right? I think I threw up a slide about the definition of insanity, doing things over and over again with the same result, and we tried to find different ways to lower them. Well, we have to go back to that now. We have, that's where we start now, because in order to think about how we keep Phillipsden open, that's really saying, how do we keep the district in its current configuration, and adding those things that we need in order to be more equitable, which we talked about. So, I want to make sure that I set that appropriately, because that is really, that's how we have to think of the frame. It isn't just simply, just the Phillipsden, it now affects the district overall, and how do we do that? So, with that said, all right. So, cost to run, FY21 cost to run, Phillipsden on top, we took all the residents, K through 5, 76 of them, and you see that it would, this is just the cost, not the total assessment, but just the additional cost to keep Phillipsden, or, again, I have to add the other three numbers to save this, but in order to maintain the configuration that we have today. Because what you do is you have to look at what Templeton Elementary School looks to run, which, 4.2 million, there's 518 K through 5 students from Templeton, and I threw in the, we threw in the per pupil cost to the right. Remember that you're sitting in the regional, and there's costs associated with kids and services up in the regional section as well. So, when you see admin and shared costs, you are literally talking about, yes, central office, but you're talking about OT, PT, speech, sped transportation, district transportation, it's everything that is not assigned, right, to the buildings themselves, right? So, just the costs that are not associated with either Templeton Elementary or Phillipsden Elementary, it's a district cost. So, you have to, you have to, you know, you have to also portion that out, or to look at it, it's $7 million. So, the math comes out correctly, $20,701,815, okay? Again, it goes back to the current configuration conversation that we've set. So, when you look at that, you start looking at, okay, well, how does this break down? So, you look at Phillipsden, FY20, the assessment was 1.6, I'm rounding, FY21 is 1.791, Templeton, didn't see the Templeton difference of 767, and you see the total assessment of $2.5 There's no, I haven't figured out a better way to say this yet, but I'm trying to figure out a better way. In essence, in order to figure out this number, which would be the total assessment for Phillipsden, you have to factor in what Templeton won't pay, okay? You have to figure that in. Whatever, I'm gonna call it the difference, but if someone would say, well, the difference of what? Well, the difference is that, what's the amount that Phillips, pardon me, Templeton's not willing to pay, that has to be factored in, to keep it in the current configuration, okay? So, when you get down to Templeton, say, okay, so, 6.6, FY20, 7.7, you see, then Templeton difference, you subtracting it off, Templeton, Templeton's, you know, I'm not paying that, that's not on me. And so, their total assessment, you know, as you can see, is, you know, 6.9. Then you have to look at, obviously, what the total state and local aid is, which is sad and not enough, but that is a meeting for another time, and then you can see that the numbers, of course, add up, $20,701,815, okay? Okay? So, if you remember, when I was going back a little bit, I said, you have to look at this, this question as not what it takes, that's just solely, not what it takes for Phillipson to keep its school open. We are a two-town regional, everything, we're symbiotic, we, we affect each other, right? Both towns affect each other one way or another. It's just not as simple as, as just saying, well, how much extra? Because it, everything affects, everything because of the regional, also, but because of the region. So we did, and again, I hesitated. What's the website? It's the MassGov Services, you can look, it's a calculator for property tax, pardon me, and we looked at just some basic, you know, numbers and what the impact of this increase would be. And, I mean, I think they kind of speak for themselves. But again, we're not, we're not assessors, right? So I don't, I don't, you know, we figured we'd throw it in, but this is certainly a, if nothing else, a, just an example. So, there, I think that, I, I think that we've answered, at least in part, the question about how much more and how it's, how it's factored out. And what I've presented prior to this information is the budget that, that I would recommend.
Thank you, Dr. Casavant. I'll open up the school committee questions or comments first. Kind of what you see in the bulk of this information, is there any questions or comments from the school committee before I open it up for public? Okay, seeing none. I just want to go over the rules real quick for public speaking. If you'd like to make a comment or have a question, please come up to the front. We have two microphones, identify your name and what town you're from. We are trying to make sure everybody will have a chance, so we are looking to keep things three minutes or less. We'll cycle through everybody, and then if you'd like to speak again, after everybody's had a chance to speak, we'll allow people to come up again. Yeah, three minutes, and all remarks are addressed through the chairperson, which is myself. So if you have something that you'd like to ask, direct it towards me, and then I will let you know if we have someone here who can answer it, or if we'll have to kind of table it and get back to you with a response, and, yeah, and we'd like to try and keep this focused on our budget. So if you have any other questions, we can entertain them at other meetings, but this is for the purpose of the actual budget hearing, so that's what the comment should focus on. So with that being said, I will open up for public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will move, yes, sure, please come in. Again, just your name and your town is, is all.
Hi, I'm Sarah Leonard, Phillipson, Mass. What you said was that you received, I'm sorry, directed to you, you received the letter from the Phillipson Select Board yesterday, and you have these numbers today?
So the request was formally received by letter yesterday. Obviously, we heard about it because we know that last Wednesday there was a motion to do so. So obviously, our staff has been working on it. There is a request to respond in writing, so that is being worked on. I believe there's, was two weeks or so for us to get back, so they're working on a formal response.
Okay. Because that's a very, that's very fast to come up with these numbers. So I'd like to have an independent assessment, because clearly, you have a stake in these numbers, and maybe having an independent assessment would be a better plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please don't fall.
Don't fall again. Ski, ski season's over. James Buzzell, Madam Chairman, from Phillipson. So, one of the things I take a little bit of issue with is the quote that this is not a big deal, Dr. Casavant, to combine the schools and increase class sizes at town meetings. You say the town spoke, and we obviously thought it's not a big deal. It's a little bit of a nihilist explanation, don't you think, that if you don't agree with this, then you must agree with that?
Please direct your comments.
Okay. No, I get it. So I would just like to bring the board's attention to, the towns didn't want to increase the budget, so we obviously are okay with increasing class sizes to 30. If the vote was, do you want to increase class sizes to 30 or keep them how they are? Do you think the vote would have been the same? It was about money, and it was about what the towns are willing to vote on and spend. So that seems a little disingenuous. Real quick in my notes, the difference, the per pupil cost, 1,400 to 8,000, 14,000 to 8,000? I know that we talked about this at the last school committee meeting, is that going off of the state's, the formula that we were discussing?
No, this is strictly number of resident students into the, the operating cost for the building. That's just pure math.
Okay. So basically, what you can read from that is it costs more to operate Phillipson on a per pupil basis.
Correct.
Got it?
Yes.
And then on the alternative town assessments, reading between the lines, the 767 number is what we're saying it costs if Phillipson wants to run their school on their own, is that accurate? In a nutshell?
In a nutshell, but I, I think we have to put a caveat, and again, I think once they've had a chance to put everything on paper, respond, everything is truly dependent on what our number that gets passed on town floor is. We have to wait till we can see what the town of Templeton will vote that they'll approve for the assessment, to know what that difference truly will be. So that, that's a first shot, and I know they're still working on.
Got it.
Finalizing truly what the number is.
So based on this, if we're going to remove Templeton's assessment for running Phillipson Elementary School, which is what this is alluding to, shouldn't we also remove the 23% of Templeton Elementary School operating costs that Phillipson currently pays? If we're going to separate the elementary schools and towns are going to pay for them on their own, wouldn't, we wouldn't do that?
So that's not what the question, that was not the exercise that we were asked to do.
Okay.
That is a different question, and if that's something that someone wants to pursue, it's outside of the realm of this, this particular budget meeting, because we're trying to certify our operating budget. This would be almost above and beyond that.
Sure.
So, fair question, but I would like to ask that that be taken at a, at a different forum, because that's not what we're focusing on here. This, this presentation of this alternate assessment is done, I think almost as a courtesy to try and get some, some sizing factor to Phillipson.
Sure. So, so just so I'm clear, so I can go back and look at this. If, if these are the numbers that we're using, what this is saying is that Templeton removes their responsibility for paying any part of Phillipson Elementary School budget?
That's not.
No?
No, we're not involving Templeton at all. This is, the exercise is, what would Phillipson have to contribute to allow the current configuration to stay in place and keep Phillipson open?
And we would s-
This is nothing to do with Templeton.
Okay. So does that mean that we would still contribute the 23% of the school budget that we're paying district-wide, and in addition to that, have to pay just for Phillipson as well?
Exactly, yes.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Have a nice night.
Hi, Sarah Leonard, Phillipson. Dr. Casavant said that you're a very school-choice driven district. Any thought as to how many people would want to be school choicing into a class size of 30?
School choice is on our agenda for our next meeting, so I welcome everyone to continue coming to our meetings and hear more about our discussion on that. Any other public comment?
Mary Pochetek Templeton, and I just have some concerns about this class size. As an educator in the system for many, many years, I think when you're putting 27, 28, 29, 30 children in a classroom, it's going to affect the children as they get older, and you're talking about having a wonderful education right now, when the children graduate from Narragansett, they have, I mean, their, their scores and everything are excellent. Where do you think that begins? In the very young. And if you're filling those classes, especially kindergarten, first, second, third grade, with the class sizes you are, those teachers, I don't care how wonderful they are, those children require so much individual attention, that I think you really need to be concerned about putting that many children in those classrooms.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. I will be, I will close the budget hearing. So our budget hearing is officially over. I thank you for everybody for coming forth with your questions and comments. Would you like to take up just a five minute?
No.
No?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a prayer commitment.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Poser. Okay, well, we'll jump right into it then. Our next order of business is our FY21 budget actions. I do want to just make everyone aware, there is a rule of necessity that's out there that we would invoke if necessary. The rule of necessity, which says that if there is a conflict of interest of any member of the school committee with a budget item, they would be able to vote if we didn't have enough people to make a vote legal. We do have a couple of people with the health insurance benefits, we also have family members on staff. The only issue that comes up is if we talk about line items, that those include, tonight we will be voting on an entire budget, and the advisory from the state says there is no conflict of interest when you vote on the number as a whole. So we should not have to, need to invoke that, that rule, but I want to bring it to everyone's attention. So we're up to the FY21 budget certification vote. So based upon our conversations and the recommendations from Dr. Casavant on our budget, I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote and certify the amount of $19,997,728 for the FY21 budget. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Questions, comments on that motion that we have brought forth? Again, that was to vote and certify the amount of $19,997,728, which is the 2.55% increase Okay, seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Tripolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. That was unanimous. Based upon that budget, I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the estimated receipts, including Chapter 70 funds of $9,990,564, charter school reimbursement of $27,786, Chapter 71 special regional transportation of $455,425, EMD of $500,000, Medicaid of $200,000, for total estimated receipts of $11 million... Did I do that? Did I say $200,000 for Medicaid?
You did.
Okay, good, because I was hoping I'd run the right call, as the clock does. For total estimated receipts of $11,173,775, which is based on the Chapter 70 and 71 aid from the Governor's House One budget submission. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments? I would just like to state for the record that we are pledging $500,000 once again of our EMD, which equates to cash of the towns. We had, I think, EMD certified of $640,000, which leaves us very little money if something were to come up unexpected. So we are putting that towards our budget, I want to make sure everyone realizes that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Tripolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. So that was unanimous. Our next motion will be that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Templeton in the amount of $7,137,757 for FY21. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry. So moved, and do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Tripolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. That was unanimous. And lastly, we would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Phillipson in the amount of $1,686,196 for FY21. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Matson?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Tripolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. So that is unanimous. So we have now taken all actions necessary to certify a budget, of which now our treasurer will prepare the required information for the towns and send that along and do all of the steps we need to. Are there any other school committee comments? I apologize, I, we could talk later, but I, not.
Your budget, your number is in the budget.
You just voted to certify, not the number you have written in your chart.
They're in the beginning of the presentation. The next school committee meeting is March 25th, at 6:00 p.m. here in McKeever. If there's no other discussion of the school committee, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The meeting is, has now been closed. Thank you, everyone.